Good evening and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Hartford, Wisconsin Common Council. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'll let you know that all notices were sent. I ask you to please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call, Lori.
The mayor and all other persons are present except the other person who should be arriving a little later, and Alder Person Kohler is attending via Zoom.
Wonderful. Joe, I see your name on the screen. Are you with us?
Yes, I am. I'll be on camera in a couple minutes.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we have before us the unanimous consent agenda, President Hagy, second by Alder Person Sikora.
Motion by Alder Person Hagy, seconded by Alder Person Sikora, approving the following two items on the unanimous consent agenda, the common council minutes of August 16, 2022, and number two, accepting a quote from Safe Slide Restoration for the refinishing of the Veterans Memorial Aquatic Center slides for an amount not to exceed $31,929.
Any further discussion? I just have a question just to make sure because it's on the unanimous consent agenda, meaning that it did not exceed the bill, which is why it's not on there. So that's good news, given our inflationary spiral. Is that correct, Steve?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those no. Motion carried. Communications, Lori.
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. We now have time for appearances and citizen comments. I see that we have two listed items, the first being Alexander Walters, to appear for transient merchant license for Polar Bear Express ice cream. I'm sure he's brought samples.
Truck's outside. Hello, I'm Alex Walters. I own and operate the business Polar Bear Express Ice Cream. This is my third or second year doing this. It's going to be my fourth season next year. It's been great. You know, I've made a lot of great relationships with people in the community. Same thing, prepackaged ice cream, simple, clean, easy. Just looking to do it again here. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Lori, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, that sounds great.
You can pick it up tomorrow afternoon in the clerk's office.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
You bet. The second item, 6B, Wendy Unger from Baker Tilly to present the 2021 City of Hartford financial statements.
This is the one of two reasons, one of two meetings to come to a year. One is to dictate what the budget is for the following year, and the other one is to find out how we did the previous year. And so Wendy has been our auditor for 250 years, and she is, well, she's been with us for a long, long time. And anyway, she's here to give her audit for the 2021 tax year.
All right. Well, thank you for having me here this evening. I am not 250 years old.
Not a year over 29. Thank you.
Just want to clear that up. But again, thank you for having me. As Steve mentioned, I'm Wendy Unger. I'm the partner responsible for the City of Hartford's audit engagement along with the CDA, the Business Improvement District also. Included in your information for tonight, you have two draft documents, one the financials, one a reporting and insight, and then a two-page handout. I'm going to use the two-page handout to hit the high points of the other two documents. I just want to clarify, the reason those two documents are still in draft format, we have a final review process that happens at Baker Tilly, a quality review. The reports were not through that by the time I needed to get those over to the city. So I apologize for that. You should have final documents in hand by the end of the week. So don't expect any changes, but just a formality. So switching gears and over to the presentation, again, an executive summary of some financial information. Before I get into the number analysis, just want to quickly mention the auditor's report included in your draft statements is our auditor's opinion, clean, unmodified opinion, same type of opinion we've issued in the past. That is what you're looking to receive. You can't get a higher type of opinion, so that's a very positive result. One thing I will just quickly note is if you're an individual that compares documents from year to year, you'll note that that opinion looks and feels a little bit different. The good part is the opinion comes right at the top. It's not buried inside that document. There was a new auditing standard that was effective for 2021 that changed the format. So I just wanted to note that quickly. Also, some additional information before we get to financial, the report.
I'm going to ask, is there a possibility that as she's mentioning documents, we can see them? We just have permanent agenda here, and I just wanted to see if that's something that we could roll on that and... Yep. Thank you.
It's not in the packet?
I think it's a separate document.
It's a separate attachment.
It's a separate attachment.
Correct.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's the three brilliant minds trying to figure out how to do that.
Is it that one?
That is the document I'm using. That is the summary. Is that what you...
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, great. So I'm on point two. Again, the reporting and insights document, that is the other document that you have included in your packet. That document we use to really accomplish a couple different purposes. One is to communicate any comments or recommendations that might come up as part of the audit process. We also have to have some general communication with you, those charged with governance. Included in that document, similar to previous years, is an internal control over financial reporting, material weakness. As part of the audit process, we become part of your internal control structure for a brief period of time. We prepare your audited statements. We also have to do the conversion entries to get from a modified accrual to a full accrual statement. So those are material journal entries that are done as part of the audit process. That is not, again, new or different or uncommon for organizations the size of the city. Also included in there are two carryover comments from previous years. One refers to cash collection points. There's many areas of cash collection within the city that don't fall under the controls of the finance department upstairs. We just remind you of that. We also note in there, just to continue to monitor arbitrage situations where you're investing, debt that you've borrowed in the bank, again, hasn't been an issue in the recent past due to interest rates and debt rates, but just something we always remind the city of on an annual basis. Again, the general audit communications that are included in there are very standard, customary. The one item I would draw your attention to, if you look at that document, are the various estimates that are included within the city's financial statements. Those are associated with depreciation, other post-employment benefits, pension benefits. So those are all based on various estimates, actuarial analysis, and that type of activity. The last point I do want to mention, this will be very important for the city for 2022, there's a new governmental accounting standard that will be effective for 2022. That's GAZB 87. It is how the city accounts and presents leases within its financial statements. The reason I bring it up today, again, we'll work with management to make sure the city is in an appropriate position to implement, but there's a lot of work that goes involved. There's a lot of players that come into play in accumulating the data. So if you think of it, all the leases that the city participates in needs to be accumulated and evaluated for presentation within the financials. Yes.
A quick question on that, then. How are we doing it differently now than what we will be expected to do?
Sure.
So is it radically different? Is it something that we're already doing?
Not necessarily. So this new standard will require all leases to be accounted for as an asset and a related liability. Currently, they just get expensed as they go through your day-to-day operations. Now, your day-to-day operations are not going to change. It will just be additional information that will be needed to include within your 2022 and future financial statements. So it will, again, add probably two to three more pages of footnotes explaining what leases the city is part of, what are the long-term obligations associated with those, what are the assets that you may be leasing, but it also applies to the city as a lessor. So it will be not only things that you lease, but things you lease to others. So it really takes some time to think through it because it's, it could be something as simple as, again, a copy machine or a postage meter, but it could also be a fleet of vehicles. It could be property. So it really takes some time to take a step back and think. So again, I just bring that to your attention. We've been talking about this for years. This lease standard is not something the GAZB just all of a sudden came up with. However, because of COVID, it was prolonged.
So that could really affect our airport, then, I would think, with all the leases that we have out there. Okay, thank you.
Yep, all the hangar leases would come into play.
All the hangar leases, yeah.
Yep. So it could be a daunting task in some areas. Now, materiality comes into play. So again, we'll work with management to make sure we're not wasting time on things that don't matter, but again, a complete list has to be accumulated. So just wanted to note that. Also, again, before I get into some financial information, we've also prepared the CDA reports. Those are out in draft format also, and in the hands of Justin, I don't know if they've been shared with the board yet, but we have a meeting coming up within the next few weeks to go over those. But again, nothing unusual or unexpected noted in that report either. Switching gears to some financial information, on the bottom of the presentation, I've included the management's discussion and analysis. That's that summary document I always refer to. That's included in the very front of the audited statements, a very high cliff note version of what happened during the year. But please keep in mind when you look at that, that is on a completely different basis of accounting. Numbers are very big. Numbers are very different than what you see every day when you're looking at your operations from the standpoint of budget presentations or your fund statements. Those statements bring all your capital assets of the city onto your balance sheet and all the long-term obligations of the city onto your balance sheet. So again, they look different than what you would see daily. Just a couple items to note, it shows the city's net position. Again, I'm not using the term fund balance. So again, very different. Net position of 146 million compared to 143 million last year. So you saw a nice increase over the previous year. The main reason for that increase, though, is on the utility side. The governmental activities, meaning everything but the utilities, essentially broke even for the year. And again, you're not looking for significant fluctuation there. You also note, if you're one, again, when you look at that, there's a comparison in there to previous years, you'll note that that increase in that position is down roughly $7 million over the previous year. So if you look at 2021, it was roughly 3 million. Last year, it was roughly 10 million. Keep in mind, 2020, you had all the airport work, and all of that was contributed. So that was revenue that came in that you didn't have in 2021. So that's the main reason for the fluctuation. So don't panic when you see that there is an explanation associated with that. Moving on, then, to the other statements included within your financials, there's a budgetary comparison that's included on page 83, and this is your general fund budget to actual, probably, at least in my opinion, one of the more important documents to show where your operational fund ended the year. Overall, for 2021, the general fund had budgeted to use roughly $300,000 of fund balance. You actually added 300,000 to fund balance, so you ended the year favorably, approximately 644,000 to the good when you look at the combined total. Couple different reasons for that, just going to hit a couple of high points. Your revenues came in $167,000 over budget. Room tax revenue was up. Again, we're in a positive swing in that. Building permit revenue was up, $80,000. Your court and parking fines were down. They were under budget by roughly $40,000. And then the other area, and this is something as you go into your budget process to keep your mind on, investment income. Your investment income saw a negative comparison to budget of approximately $62,000 on your general fund, and the market does not appear to be fluctuating any better than it did in 2021. So keep your eye on that as you put together your 2023 budget. Your expenses came in $629,000 under budget. So again, very favorable results from an expenditure standpoint. Again, all of the functional classifications were under budget. So when we look at public works, public safety, general government, everything was under budget. The largest contributors to that positive variance is the public safety was $206,000 under budget, mainly in the PD area. An inspection fire was a little bit over budget, but PD and inspection contributed. 206,000, public works was $208,000 under budget. And then your leisure activities, which is your park and some of your rec, $165,000. So costs were controlled and ultimately a favorable variance there. The one other item to note in the general fund, you ended under budget on your transfers in. And if you keep in mind the transfers that come into the general funds comes from your utilities in the form of a payment in lieu of taxes. That number has been decreasing on an annual basis just based on things that are done in the utility, cleanup of old assets, cleanup of old inventory, and those all are contributing factors to that calculation. So that figure came in $147,000 under budget, which again is a negative variance. But overall, again, added 328,000 to fund balance, ended the year at 7 million of fund balance. You have two pieces to that. There's a small portion of that that is non-spendable. That's because you've already spent the money. That's like prepaid. You prepay your insurance. You prepaid it in December. It's a January expense. It'll get recognized in January income statement, but the cash is gone. So we take that out. So that leaves you seven point, or I'm sorry, 6.78 million of unassigned fund balance. So a very strong financial position within your general fund. Moving on, then, to the utilities. What I've included in the handout are the three largest utilities, your electric, water, and wastewater funds. All had positive additions to net position. All of them positively cash flowed during the year, which means from an operational standpoint, they generated enough income from revenues to customers to pay their bills, pay their employees, also to pay their debt, and ultimately to have some additional capital-type activity within each of those. Those three funds in total ended the year at 14.3 million of cash, of which roughly 2.4 million is restricted for various debt covenants and equipment replacement-type needs. So again, very positive results in that area. Long-term debt, I've included the page references. There's extensive footnotes that detail. Just a couple items to note there. There was no new debt issued for the city in 2021. The city paid down roughly 4 million in long-term obligations, just normal and customary pay down of principal during the year. The long-term obligations, if you look at the tables, you'll still see a continued increase in the OPEPs or the other post-employment benefits of the city. Those, that figure went up roughly $500,000 over the previous year. That's all based on actuarial data and calculations and based on the benefits that retired employees received through the city. The other item to note within the long-term debt section is the city has the capacity to borrow roughly 59 million. So when you look at that, you can borrow up to 5% of your equalized value, which is roughly 81 million. You had 21 million of outstanding general obligation debt, so your capacity to borrow is 60 million. So again, very strong ability to borrow if need be. Last items that I've noted on here are just the various components of fund balance, just some of the larger funds that I want to note very quickly. General fund, I've already mentioned. Your debt service fund had $46,000 of fund balance as of the end of the year. A good portion of what was in there for fund balance was used during 2021, which is completely acceptable. Typically, we see that debt service fund with a zero fund balance, again, unless you're trying to accumulate resources for future balloon payments or something of that nature. But again, 46,000 remains in that fund, and that can be used to offset any future budgetary needs or pay something off in advance that's callable or something of that nature. The Veterans Park Pool Project, that continues to be a fund of the city. That fund really accumulates a little bit of interest on an annual basis, and then there's some, any type of capital needs that that pool may have come out of that fund also. As of the end of the year, that fund had almost $107,000 of fund balance, and again, those monies are set aside for that project until the commission or the council would deem that is no longer needed. But again, that fund remains intact and available for pool needs. Last fund, Capital Project Fund, other projects, this is all the various capital project funds of the TIFs. So they're all accumulated in one column in your financial statements. They do present a deficit fund balance currently of roughly $3 million. And again, that's not unusual, unusual for TIFs to be in a deficit until they start to generate enough increment to pay their bills. And that deficit is mainly, I believe, in TIFs 7, 10, and 12. So again, we'll hopefully see that deficit decrease on an annual basis as increment is generated. Finally, the last item I note there, the non-major governmental funds, there's an accumulation in the very back of your financials that discloses all the remaining funds. As I noted in the handout, this includes the library, transportation, rec center. Those funds in total had almost 7 million of fund balance. The only item I would note out of there is there is a new ARPA fund for the federal funds that the city received during 2021. You've gotten your second tranche of that in June of 2022. You spent roughly 500,000 during 2021, so that's coming through as revenue with an associated expense in that back schedule, but you also have roughly 317,000 of that first tranche that has yet to be spent. So that's sitting on your balance sheet as unearned revenue. When you spend it, it'll come through as revenue and offset the related expenses. So if you look at that funding, you think we got more than what is there. That's true, but the rest is sitting in cash and on your balance sheet. Lastly, I've included my email, my direct line. Happy to talk with any of you about any of this in more detail, but I'm also happy to answer any questions you might have currently.
Any questions from council members? President Hagy.
Okay. The geo-debt that we have, 21,500,000, that's for the pool, the library, the city hall, does that also include the 10-year CIP notes?
Yes, that is everything.
Okay, so that's everything. Okay, good.
Yep.
And then on depreciation of facilities, that's a 40-year depreciation, or is it a 20-year depreciation?
It varies based on the item. So if it's, if you're referring to the city assets...
I'm talking about buildings.
I'd have to look. I don't know that number off the top of my head. Do you know what they're depreciating? I think it is 40.
Okay, that's what I gathered from...
There's a footnote in the statements that does detail it out.
I thought that's what I was seeing.
Yep.
I was doing some light reading this afternoon. And at any rate, so the depreciation, that goes down at a continuous rate, 1/40 of the cost of the property as built. It doesn't inflate, you know, you look at a 40-year-old building, to build a new would be a lot higher cost, but it's based on the original cost.
Original cost depreciated, straight line over its useful life. Correct.
All right, that was my question.
On the city side, utility is different. Yep.
Fine, thank you.
Alder Person Rosniak.
Earlier, you mentioned payment in lieu of taxes. How many entities do we have making a payment in lieu of taxes?
That's an item that is based on the PSC. So any regulated utility is required to make a payment in lieu of taxes to a municipality. So your water and your electric.
Right.
We actually have one more.
And the seed.
And that is a building that was formerly, oh, no, that is a nursing home, which is a nonprofit. And originally, when they did that, they, we got an agreement for them to pay a pilot payment, and so they make a pilot payment. It's a voluntary situation.
So those are two?
So total three. So water, electric, and then...
Oh, okay. Water, electric, and three. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, which is, who does it, yeah.
Alder Person Phillip.
So you find this every year, I think this is the fourth year I've heard this, where we have some cash that we bring in, and we have an area there that is found in the audit to be compliant or non-compliant or just aware?
Just awareness.
It's just awareness, but it still satisfies SOX and all the pieces
Correct.
with regard to carrying cash on hand.
Yep. So it's your pool. It's the library.
Yeah, got it. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, we look forward for you to come back next year. It's always a pleasure. You keep it going and very thorough. So thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. And the staff appreciates all the work that Wendy does with us, not only during the audit season, but throughout the year, we constantly are contacting her about different issues that might affect our financials. And so she's very good at, her and her staff are very good at working with Dawn and our finance department along with myself on any questions that we have. So we appreciate our relationship that we have with their group.
Super, thank you. Next item is the mayor's report. I just had a quick question for a city administrator. The last weekend of the pool is coming up.
Actually, you didn't finish up communicate, I'm sorry, appearances from citizens.
Okay, anybody, yes, you are correct. I apologize. Anybody wishing to come up and speak to anything germane to the city council, you get three glorious minutes. Just name your, or give us your name and your street address. Anybody? Anybody? Hearing none. Okay, thank you. The, the pool, it's this coming weekend, isn't it?
Correct.
Okay, so this coming weekend is the last weekend our pool will be open. Just wanted to make sure that everybody knew. So jump in, the water's fine. Make sure that you take advantage of our phenomenal Veterans Aquatic Center facility for the rest of this week and this coming weekend. People always ask, I'm sure Steve gets calls, I know I do, "Why are you closing it so early? It's still warm?" Which is a legitimate question. And the reason is all the lifeguards leave, and our city attorney won't let us just post a sign that says "Swim at your own risk." Therefore, we do have to close the pool when the lifeguards all go to college. So that's the reason. Alder Manic Requests, President Hagy.
I have no comments tonight, Mayor.
Alder Person Rosniak.
Nothing tonight.
Alder Person Turchi.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alder Person Garza.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alder Person Phillip.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alder Person Sikora.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alder Person Webb.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
I'll write the date down.
One more.
Oh, Alder Person, yeah, that interesting face in the screen there, Alder Person Kohler.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. With that, we have standing reports. Doesn't look like we have anything for finance, personnel, public works, or utilities. Therefore, we will go to resolutions and possible action thereon. The first one, 10A, Resolution 3634. This is a resolution approving the transfer of an 8,818 square-foot parcel of land adjacent to 835 East Sumner Street to JJR Properties LLC. I'm assuming this will be handled by our city attorney, Ian Proust.
So, sorry, if you recall, the vacation of Right-Away came before the council, about three, four months ago, for two parcels. One of them was in the Right-Away on the corner of Sumner and Wilson, and the other was behind the, what's now the affiliated clinical and the next-door property adjacent, well, parallel to Sumner Street. This is one of those properties. This is the next step in that process where we're transferring it to the adjacent property owners so that they can develop that property more fully utilizing that property, utilizing the vacated land, Right-Away land. We're requesting that this be approved contingent, or sorry, we're requesting this one be approved, and the city can enter into the transaction after any legal fees or other transactional fees are paid by JJR Properties that were incurred in the process of the vacation.
Okay. I've read through this. Questions by anybody in the council here for our city attorney? If not, I would look for a motion to approve if the council wishes. Alder Person Phillip makes a motion, seconded by President Hagy.
Motion by Alder Person Phillip, seconded by Alder Person Hagy for the adoption of proposed Resolution 3634.
Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those no. Motion carried. Next is 10B, Resolution 3635, a resolution approving the transfer of a 10,243 square-foot parcel of land adjacent to 1147 East Sumner Street to JJR Properties. Taking this also will be our city attorney, Ian Proust.
Yep. So I, instead of the resolution, I pulled up the map for this one. This shows the portion that was vacated along Bell Avenue. This is the same explanation. The only difference is we're asking that this one be approved contingent upon the recording of an easement across this property for the affiliated clinical building. We will be drafting that easement and getting it put in place, and then we would transfer it after that's recorded. So it would just be contingent upon the easement.
Okay, thank you. Any questions by council? If not...
What do they need an easement for?
So, the, let's see, I'm trying to see where you can see it here. Okay. So if you look on, well, the black and white map here, this is that affiliated clinical building. This is their par- This is their parking lot. There is a driveway that goes across the very corner of that, where my mouse cursor is going. We have a legal description for that. That was one of the things that held up the process for bringing this back to council was getting the legal description for that portion of the driveway for affiliated clinicals. We just need to finalize an easement with the parties and get that recorded prior to transferring it to make sure they have access to their back lot there.
No, no way to move that driveway? So it's, we don't have to have that easement?
There's, there's no need to move that. The Krebs don't really have any objection to it. They're not going to utilize that portion of it. So they don't, they have no problem with the access point there. And that was, that was part of affiliated clinicals not raising any objection at the road vacation stage.
Good.
Alderperson Philip. Yeah, so this was for, we had this conversation before, right? This was for egress and access to it?
Yep.
By a roadway or a small access?
Yeah, they, they have, they have a little driveway off of Bell Avenue for their parking lot back there.
I remember the dialogue from last time. This is just clarity on that.
Yep, this is just clarity and formalizing it. We're just getting the approvals now so that we can take the process as it goes.
Thanks, Mayor.
Any other questions, comments? If not, would look for a motion to approve. Alderperson Sikora, seconded by Alderperson Webb.
Motion by Alderperson Sikora, seconded by Alderperson Webb for the adoption of proposed Resolution 3635.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Item 10C, Resolution 3636, a resolution authorizing execution of the Department of Natural Resources Principal For Given Financial Assistance Agreement. This will be handled by, Brian?
Yes. So, good evening. So this is a resolution that's related to our lead service line replacement program.
Could you pull the mic a little closer? That'd be great.
Yep. Is that better? All right, so this is part of the lead service line replacement program that we've been working on this year. If you remember earlier this year, we applied for a DNR grant that would cover the replacement costs for the privately owned lead service laterals in our system. We received the grant for up to $786,000 for that project. We bid the project out earlier this year and awarded the contract to Wood Sewer and Excavating out of New London, Wisconsin for $468,000. They started their replacements in July of this year, and so far, they've replaced 45 lead service laterals, and we have 110, so they're almost halfway with their replacements. Since the DNR grant also covers galvanized service laterals, we'll use the remaining funds to cover any of the galvanized services that we can replace for expecting to replace about 60 of those under the, under the grant funding. So similar to last year, the DNR requires the approval of a resolution authorizing the execution of the DNR's principal forgiven financial assistance agreement. On the resolution states three bullet points. First, the city will replace lead services, lead services at residences, schools, and daycares. The second bullet point states that the municipality has applied for assistance in the form of a loan, and the principal will be, principal will be forgiven. And the final bullet point states that the safe drinking water loan program can provide a principal forgiven loan for the amount of $786,000. So with the approval of the resolution tonight, we'll begin submitting the first payment request to the DNR early, or probably next week already, so. If anybody has any questions?
Questions, comments for our utility director, Brian Rose? Yes, Alderperson Rosniak.
Just a comment, isn't it nice, Brian, to get 786,000 on a forgivable loan?
It's a lot of money. It's going to go a long way, so.
Get more of those, you know?
Forgive me, forgive me.
That's awesome.
Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, would look for a motion to approve. Alderperson Turchi, seconded by Alderperson Garza.
Motion by Alderperson Turchi, seconded by Alderperson Garza for the adoption of proposed Resolution 3636.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Okay, we now go to ordinances. 11A, changing back to our, our city attorney, just, Ian Proust. Ordinance 1461, an ordinance repealing and recreating Chapter 26 of the municipal code. I'm sure you've all read all the interesting things that have been. So Ian, go ahead.
So this is a culmination of several things. The, this, one of the things that this is addressing is the request to present a chicken ordinance to the common council. This also addresses a couple of problems that have arisen recently and historically. So the current animal code has a set number of three for combined cats and dogs. So you have it up to three cats, three dogs, or any combination thereof. It does not have any cap for other animals. So we have run into problems with that in the past. There's been examples in other communities of snakes. We have ways to address that through our exotic animals. But some people may be aware that we had an issue with guinea pigs a few years ago where there were people breeding them in the city, and we had to address that issue. So one of the things this is attempting to do is to establish maximum or guidelines for the maximum number of total animals, not fish, but other, any other animals that you would keep. So ferrets, parakeets, geckos, you know, any of those things. We would have a maximum cap so we don't have 50 animals in a house within the city. In going through the code, our vicious dog provisions were very out of date. We had insurance guidelines of $50,000, which is woefully divisioned for a vicious dog. And in reviewing things, practically speaking, it's impossible to get an insurance policy for a vicious dog. Nobody will insure a vicious dog. So rather than set up criteria that aren't feasible, made more sense to just say you can't have a vicious dog. In an attempt to.
And just so, and you define vicious dog?
Yes, vicious dog is defined in the code. And we can go through some of the specifics. Vicious dog is defined in the code. In an attempt to create a middle ground, I've utilized some language that, from Sheboygan, and adapted it that creates a, an in-between category of a dangerous dog. So dangerous dog is not one that has done significant bodily harm, but has displayed some dangerous traits. So there's various criteria where a dog could be declared dangerous, and there's certain requirements that you have to follow, like, you know, having a muzzle or having, you know, specific restraints, et cetera, to make sure that it's not a danger to the community. But vicious dogs would just be flat-out prohibited. The other issue here is, or that we're addressing, is we've had the fanciers license, and I'll explain what that is, a kennel license and a groomer's license that have been located in our health and sanitation code for many years. The health and sanitation code goes back probably 40 years at least and focused on a health officer in the city. The city hasn't had a health officer in at least 20 years, from what I can tell. It certainly hasn't had one since I've been here, I'm, I think around 2000. My guess, if I had to guess, I would guess that when Hartford Hospital switched from being a local hospital and having local doctors into an Aurora facility, that probably went by the wayside. We no longer had a local doctor. We now had somebody employed by a larger system, and that went away. I don't know when it happened, but regardless, all of our, all of our animal licenses for fanciers, kennels, and groomers were tied to the opinion of a health officer that hasn't existed for many years. So I've taken those provisions and moved them from the health and sanitation chapter to the animal chapter. Kennel and groomer licenses are pretty self-explanatory. A fancier's license would be somebody who wants to keep more than the otherwise normally allowed number of dogs and cats. I've also incorporated our total animal count into that as well. And that would allow somebody with certain inspections and stuff like that to certain provisions to protect for both animal health and for the surrounding community to exceed the otherwise normal cap of three dogs and cats, or what I'm proposing of seven total animals. So we would basically add one additional dog for any lot, dog or cat for a lot under 2.25 acres, and two for any other lots that are above 0.25 acres. So I can run through some specifics here. The, to address the total number of animals, I've essentially, oh, and then the other part of the ordinance is just incorporating the revised code into our Chapter 42 fees. I didn't change any of the fees significantly. There's no changes to the bond schedule or anything. The chicken fee, we've established at $50. That's consistent with the City of West Bend's chicken fee. And then the.
Is that annual?
Annually, yep, that's an annual license fee that they pay in West Bend. Obviously, that can be changed, but that was, I just pulled language from over there. And the animal fancier, I said as well at 50 because there would be inspections involved. So I can go over any specifics people want. I don't want to go too far down the rabbit hole and, you know.
Well, I have a question, just because you said total animals. So I, I just want to give you a scenario.
Yes.
Okay, somebody owns, say, a turtle, two guinea pigs, two parakeets, and a gecko.
Yep.
Okay, that means they can't have a dog and a cat with that.
Correct.
Okay, just, just so you're.
Yes. And it's, so you, so you understand where I came up with the number? I, I mean, obviously, it's a little bit, we have to set a number somewhere. That's where you set that as debatable. I said three dogs and cats, and based on what we had in the chicken ordinance, four chickens, so you can have seven total.
Okay, so the number of chickens is in this ordinance?
Uh, yes, it's in the chapter for the chickens.
Okay, right.
We can go through that one more in depth, but we can cover the other questions first.
Well, then, before we pass this, there are two things that I would like to address and would be interested in seeing changed. One is, is I think that $50 a year without inspections for chicken is excessive. I would request half of that. And I went to the executive leadership conference for the League of Wisconsin Municipalities and talked to many different mayors and village administrators and village presidents. And it was interesting in that how many cities have chicken ordinances? I was not aware of the fact that virtually everybody I came across had one. And, and the mayor of, the City of Jefferson, the mayor of Wausau, Wisconsin, she's a very interesting lady and is a big chicken aficionado. And they, Wausau, if you've ever gone through Wausau, obviously has houses that are very close together and are not nearly as restrictive as, as what we're proposing. Virtually everybody, well, except for, I know West Bend, you said had four, but all the people that I ran into said six. I don't think that's a bad idea because of the fact that I don't think two more chickens is going to really do anything, especially considering you can have a bunch of animals. Now, the interesting thing is, is if you have six chickens, you can only have a dog, and you can't have a cat. Is that, are chickens within that number?
So chickens would be in that number, like I said, that, that number I came up with by taking dogs and cats plus chickens, so obviously that can be adjusted. I would recommend not going too far down the rabbit hole and saying 15 animals or something like that.
No, no, I'm not looking at that.
But I think it's reasonable to say you can have, I mean, what, maybe you say eight total instead of that, so you can't have three dogs and cats and, you know, full complement of chickens. But obviously, that's easy to change. I'll also note, I'm not expecting a motion to pass this without a second reading. I would anticipate any modifications, and then I incorporate those and bring it back for final passage next time.
That would be the other thing I would recommend, that we not necessarily move to, to, for immediate consideration, that this is a first reading and that we have time to go over some things. So I, I mean, just letting you know that my interest would be to, to have a lower. Again, I think 50 is awful high, and to kick it up to six chickens and then modify it, maybe that the number of chickens would count only as a half. So if you have four chickens, it would be two animals type of thing. So because you have your chickens at a totally different place, obviously, you don't have six chickens running around your house. Not that you couldn't, but I don't think that that would be something that the most people would. Interestingly enough, when I asked them, I said, how many complaints you got? Not one mayor or village president said, we've never had a chicken complaint. So I was, I was very impressed with that. And I, it was brought up, we even made a joke about it in one of the sessions as far as chickens. So trust me, I, I talk more about chickens, seeing that we were going to be facing this than, than I believed I, I was going to. But I, I just wanted to really get a good feel on it. And obviously, I'm a pro-chicken person, but unless there's a tie, I don't get a vote. So I'm interested in, in, you know, putting my, my two cents worth in. Alderperson Webb.
Yeah, I would agree that the seven number is low. I, I think I would propose that it be a 10, and that's kind of like a reasonable place for it to be. I also wanted to bring up, I have a question first. How many other municipalities have, like, the dangerous dog provisions? Because in reading those, they, they're pretty unclear. And I think if we have provisions like that, it should be clear that, like, denoting a dangerous dog is something that a police officer would do. And that's not clear in the statute right now.
So, so you, you mentioned that before the meeting, and while I was, you know, while the audit discussion was going on, I did modify the ordinance, you know, accordingly, and essentially added a statement at the beginning of those descriptions that says, so for the vicious dog, a vicious dog includes any dog found in violation of any of the following under a declaration, and if requested, a hearing pursuant to Section 9 of this section. So it basically makes it clear that in order for the, you know, in order to have a vicious dog, and it would, similar language in the dangerous dog, it has to be under a declaration by a police officer, and there's a right to a hearing as well. So I clarified that to make it a little more self-explanatory.
Yes, I think, like, for the vicious dog, agree. I think I'm more concerned about the dangerous dog just because of the way it's defined. You know, it says, like, dogs that have certain traits or that, you know, appear to be menacing, you know, like a chihuahua barking at people could meet that definition. And there needs to be, like, a higher bar for that, especially because of the other requirements. Also, on the chicken ordinance, we had discussed last time that the principle that the neighbors around the person asking for the permit would have to approve it. And the language in here just says that they get notice.
Yep.
That there's going to be chickens.
So I strongly, strongly, strongly recommend against doing a permission from the neighbors.
Thank you.
That is asked, that's asking for problems. It's asking for arbitrary denials based on neighbor disputes. It, it basically opens the door to vindictive actions between neighbors. It's going to cause neighbor issues. And frankly, it takes away the right to do something, you know, on your own property when it would be in complete compliance with the terms of the ordinance. By giving notice to your neighbor, you're putting them on notice that, yes, this person will be getting chickens so that they know if there's problems, they can report it to the city, and we can investigate those problems. But if somebody is keeping it in full compliance with the code, you know, if, if you're gonna, if you're gonna make a contingent, then I would say, don't do it at all. Because you're.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying one way or another. I'm just pointing out that that's not in this.
I know that's something that comes up commonly in discussions of chickens. It came up in West Bend. It's come up in other municipalities that I've talked to about this. But we don't require somebody's permission to put up a garage. We don't require somebody's permission to put in a pool. I, I mean, we're not requiring somebody's permission to have dogs and cats. It's, it's either something that is permitted under certain guidelines or it's something that we shouldn't allow.
I did have one other question with respect to the, the number of dogs and cats. Is there a particular reason why we chose three there as the dog and cat number? Because is it, you can have three dogs and three cats? Or is it combined between the two?
Three total amongst the two categories.
And so we're saying you could have seven other animals, but you can only have three of this particular type as long as they're domestic? I mean, I don't necessarily see why we would make, be making arbitrary distinctions between that. If we're saying you can have five geckos, we're favoring geckos over.
Yep, but I think the reason you do that is because of the nature of the other animals. So we are, we have a, we have a, an ordinance that prohibits exotic animals, right? So you can't have, you know, certain types of snakes, or, well, you can have, like, corn snakes. But you can't have, you can't have, like, a boa constrictor. You can't have alligators. You can't, you know, we have a very broad description of that. We have a broad description, or prohibition on livestock, geese, other fowl, et cetera.
Yeah.
So the category of animals that are going to fall under that, other animals, are likely going to be solely indoor animals, something that is kept inside the house. Cats are an issue because we have, you know. Cats are an issue because we have, you know, common issues with people who have, you know, who are cat hoarders. I mean, that, that is a very, unfortunately, common occurrence amongst municipalities, that you have to deal with people with twenty cats.
Well, but I mean, if the number is four and not three, you're not, you're not encouraging-
And you, you'll find fifty different answers for that. West Bend, you can have two dogs, two cats, but you can't have three cats. So it's two dogs, two cats, period. So, you know, that number is just what Hartford's always had. The, and the, the other reason is dogs, obviously, dogs, you know, yes, you have small dogs that may be mostly indoor dogs, but it creates a bigger issue, and you have to draw a bright line for that, because you don't want five Great Danes on a property unless there's specific inspections.
Well, so, I, I guess my major point is, if we say you can have six chickens-
Yes.
-right, to get up to ten, I, I don't, and those are outdoor animals, I guess I don't understand why we would limit it to three. So my, my proposal, if we're going through edits here, would be to make that number four, which aligns with other communities. Because I don't think, if, if we're opening up to ten total animals and doing all those things, I think we should rethink that.
So I, I'd have to look around. I don't think most communities allow four dogs.
No, 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 four total of cats and dogs.
Well, so two and two.
Yeah, it could be.
Yeah. So if, the, the way it's written right now, it's three, you know, you can have three of any combination. So if I increase that to four, somebody could have four dogs. And, you know, I, again, I think that's problematic because you have small lots, you have now four, you know, larger dogs on a property, it's, it creates issues. So, you, you know, I, I understand that there's different calculus in all different communities. Like I said, West Bend is two and two. But, yeah.
And with that, with that fact, too, is, I'm not sure if any of you ever get phone calls about complaints about neighbors. The more dogs, the more complaints, so.
Clarification on, just the last sentence you said.
Yeah, two and two.
You said, "Property." We have a lot of duplexes in multifamily homes?
Yep. So, so those are typically treated separately.
Okay.
Um, yeah, now, the chickens, that's one thing to note in the chicken ordinance, is it's for owner occup, you know, the way West Bend's was drafted, the way I pulled over from what I drafted there, is it's owner occupied properties, either a single family or duplex, um, because I think it's inadvisable to have somebody without the ownership buy-in keeping chickens in a rental property. I think that's just asking for problems. Wade?
If somebody has, currently has four dogs, are they in violation of our current code?
They would be, yes.
Okay.
And Dennis?
Okay, on the three dogs, I would stick with that because I see people walking down the sidewalk, I run into them routinely, walking three dogs. To walk four dogs, I think that gets out of control.
Sure.
That's where my real issue is. I have a problem with people walking three dogs, but there are enough of them doing it, so I wouldn't propose going to lessen that. But nonetheless, uh, what we've got here is, uh, basically, it's three cats and/or dogs.
Yes.
That's basically what we're saying. I would stay with that. If we up the number of chickens, well, I don't know, West Bend has a track record, we could go up to more chickens a year from now, for instance. To go down, you know, you got six chickens in your yard now, or seven chickens at home, and a year from now, well, we're going to change it down to four. That's a bigger problem than going up.
Yes, because now you're grandfathering properties.
Okay.
I'm not always for splitting the baby, Dennis.
I, I understand that, but-
Do the law.
-we're following the West Bend ordinance, and I don't have a problem with it. However, okay. Um, page fifty-four of our packet, which is, uh, section twenty-six eleven, number three, it says, "No personal shall slaughter any chickens." Obviously, it should be no person, just to correct that. Uh, so obviously, I did read it. Uh, and then when it goes on to the four cats and dogs for a, you know, what is that? For a-
For the fanciers' license?
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, it's four and four, and then five and five?
Nope, that would be the four combination. So that would be four cats and/or dogs.
Okay, all right, that's what I'm looking for then.
Five cats and/or dogs.
Because it says four cats and dogs.
Okay, yep.
And I was wondering if it meant four cats and four dogs, and what means four cats and/or dogs.
Yep.
And five cats and/or dogs on a bigger property.
Yep, correct.
Just to get clarity there. And, uh, no, I think that's all that I have at this point. I don't have a problem with the, the four because I, I know people in West Bend that have chickens, and they're doing fine with it, and they're getting plenty of eggs.
What section was the slaughter again, Dennis?
Uh, that's in twenty-six eleven, number three. That would be on page fifty-four of our packet.
Okay. All right, I'll find that. Yeah. There it is. All right. All right. Any other questions? Oh, sorry, Alderperson Churchy.
Steve, I think I asked you last time the chicken thing came up. How many requests we had for chickens? And you said in the last two years, none. Has there been any-
I've gotten maybe two, maybe two.
Maybe two, one a year. How many have we got recently?
Uh, the last one I probably had is usually I get a call right around Easter.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
I got a dog, I got one dog, about that big. There you go.
Any other, yeah, Alderperson Rosniak?
Following up on Jeff's comments, I received one email from a lady that wanted to have chickens, and I received two verbal requests at a church on people that didn't want to have chickens. So I've got two no's and one yes, personally. That's it. No other phone calls, no other emails, nothing.
Alderperson Churchy.
Follow-up. Talked to all my neighbors, no chickens. Okay.
Tell them what they really said.
Uh, no chickens.
Paraphrasing, no chickens.
Well, then that's good, because then they don't have, they, they won't have chickens next door to them. None of them want it, then your, then your neighborhood's fine.
Did anybody call in Mr. Koller?
Alderperson Koller.
Okay, then that's good, Mr. Churchy. Then none of your neighbors will have it, so you don't have to believe them. I'm just joking.
Ian, I just got a question on the fancier for the dogs. Is that real typical, that they don't have more than four dogs, like people that do show dogs and things like that?
So, I, again, I mean, I don't think there's any magic number. I think you look at, at every community is a little bit different with some of these things. I mean, there's certain things-
Would you base it off of the West Bend?
Uh, I, I base this off discussions with, you know, planning and zoning and stuff like that. I, and it was, my, my concern was, some of these point-one-three acre lots having five dogs is a lot.
I get it, I get it.
Yeah. So, Alder-
Alderperson Webb?
So what's, is the process, like, let's say, we moved forward and the chicken ordinance went into effect.
Yes.
Would the normal, so if you had, somebody wasn't following the ordinance and didn't have the right coop, or that, you know, got a rooster and it woke everybody up at five o'clock in the morning, is, it, does it go through the normal, like, code enforcement process?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
So they would get cited for violating the code.
And they could theoretically violate and pay those violations for how long?
Well, so, if you look at the section I have up here, um, so basically, if we cite them and they're found to be in violation of the section, uh, their permit is revoked, uh, and they would be ineligible for a permit for a period of one year. If it happens again, they can't get one ever again.
And is that just for chickens, or is that?
Uh, that's chickens, but it's also the similar language for, like, the fanciers' permit. Um, so I, I believe that's where I brought that up from, for the chickens, because I think that's diff, I don't think I have that in West Bend's code.
Okay. Alderperson Hegi, or President Hegi, sorry?
Either way. Uh, do you have any idea, either of you, how many permits have been issued in West Bend? Because I think the ordinance has been in place about a year and a half.
I, I want to say there was, there's around twenty chickens total.
Okay.
Uh, it's not like there's three hundred chickens in the city of West Bend.
No, no, I knew that, I knew it wasn't a large number.
Twenty chickens, yep, so.
And then, uh, one comment on the cats, uh, I don't care if we change that somehow, but, um, the reason we even have that in ordinance is because we've had cases in the past. I know of several places that had thirty cats and more, and they, they were, they were cat houses.
Mm-hmm.
Quite literally, and, uh, they were a real problem. So we have to have a limit of something, something respectable.
I believe we took one of them and became a parking lot, I'm not sure about that. Alderperson Churchy.
Question about HOAs.
Yes.
So cer, HOAs have certain, not restrictions, but qualifications for, like, sheds.
Yep.
Things like that. Would HOAs be able to have qualifications on what your chicken coop looks like?
Not my problem.
No, but I mean-
Yes.
Would they, could they have that kind of type of jur- jurisdiction on that, saying-
Yep.
That the chicken coop siding has to match the siding of the house, like my stupid shed in my backyard?
I would actually guess that a lot of HOAs say you can't have chickens, uh, same with condo associations. Um, so, you know, you have one of the newer duplex condo associations, where it's a duplex on a, you know, two separate condos. Uh, most of the condo declarations I draft say no chickens. So I would guess if you have a, you know, HOA that was created anytime recently, it may have a prohibition on that already. Um, I joke about that, but, you know, that's a separate restriction, the city has nothing to do with that. So we set, we set our baseline, if your HOA wants to require something else, that's the HOA and the property owner's problem. So, we won't, we don't enforce that. We grant it and say, "Look at your HOA documents," but we don't check that.
Gotcha.
Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise, we can go, uh, I don't believe anybody's going to move to, for an immediate, we'll, we'll have a rewrite in a second reading. Ordinance, uh, number one four six two, an ordinance repealing chapter twenty-one of the municipal code.
Just, can I, can I go back six?
Oh, please, go ahead.
On the rewrite, um, of this, um, again, our proposal was for four dogs and cats, correct? So I was going to suggest that we take amendments individually, as far as, is there a majority support for the amendments, and then I can incorporate those and come back. Um, and for the chickens, you know, individually, you know, is- Is it four, is it six?
Well, the, the, uh, the dog-cat thing, you said an interesting thing that kind of was brushed over, uh, and that was, West Bend was two and two.
Yes.
I can understand that. Up to two dogs, up to two cats, which would give you four, but you can't have more than two of either one.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
And, and if, yeah, if that works for you, that's fine. I mean, if that's what West Bend has, I mean, you got a consensus.
Just, just to confirm.
What you want to see.
Does it have three dogs now, or three cats now?
You can have three dogs now.
Yeah.
But you're going down then to two dogs and two cats.
Effective when?
So, I mean, right now, today, you can have three dogs.
Can't you say four, but no more than three of any of dogs or cats?
Cats and dogs living together, total chaos.
Yeah, which is effectively the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
So, wha, why can't we just leave it as is?
Nobody's saying-
Yeah, it's just, three.
I agree.
It's, it, why, why do we want to make that change? What's the big issue here?
Well, and so what I would-
I'm more concerned about the chickens.
Yeah, so what I would propose is we go through the, I mean, there's a couple of specific amendments we've talked about, that we go through those and address those specifically, and then, once those are, the dust settles for those, you can do the initial motion to approve it with the amendments that were approved, and then I'll bring it back.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, we, we'll just take each one as a separate amendment, if we can do it that way, of all the items that were brought up. Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, so, again, uh, first one would be the amount of dogs. Are we talking three? Uh, or three and four, three of any one or four of the two together? Um, what's the direction?
I would leave it as it is.
Okay, so we have a motion to leave it as is.
Do we have a, do we have a motion to change it?
Because we, this is, we're going to a second reading, it's not something I, I don't know that we can vote on.
Well, we, but our second reading is going to incorporate the changes you'd like to see tonight, correct?
Understood, but I, I, my thought was that we would just, everybody would be able to noodle it over the time, get any feedback over the next two weeks from people who are our vast viewing audience, and of course, our, uh, our reporter here who's going to, you know, codify this for the masses, uh, and then be able to come back and just, just look, okay, here's what I've got.
Yep.
This is what I put together. Are we going to take four or six? Let's vote on it. For chickens, are we going to do two cats or three cats, or four cats, or no cats, or...
Well, so my concern is, there's a lot of discussion about what are we going to do with a few of these things. I would like to have some definite, like, yes, this is, you know, we are changing the cats and dogs to this, or we're leaving it the same, so-
I'd leave it as it currently is.
Yeah, so I'd like to, I would prefer to do amendments. That way I know what I'm finalizing, and then can present it in final form for the second reading.
Okay, but, but just, just so you're, but it can be amended-
Yes.
-during the final reading.
Yes.
And that's, I was just looking to kind of, you know, set up the, the thing where we, we would kind of somewhat leave it blank with a couple of suggestions, and then vote on each one of those, uh, as, as an amendment.
Sure.
You know, next time, so we'll be able to do it that way.
I mean, if it's a, if it's a specific ordinance that is, you know, like, I, I'm trying to think of a good example, but it's like, I move to approve this, but mod, you know, if it was just the chicken ordinance, I move to approve the chicken ordinance, but change it to six.
Okay.
That's an easy change to incorporate based on the motion, but because this is a whole chapter, and because there's enough dissension, I, I think it would give, and, and you can still change it if you guys, you know, if people read through it and there's this additional change, but at least I have the marching orders of it, and then I can send out the, you know, I'll make the changes, you know, Thursday when I'm in, at office hours, and we can blast out the modified, modified version, finalized version.
Okay, then why don't you go through real quickly the, the individual things, and we can kind of give a-
So the first thing that was up for discussion was the total number of dogs and cats. So I heard Dennis make a motion that it would remain the same.
Well, if somebody wants to change it to something else, because, uh, to make a motion to leave it as it is-
Fair.
It would be better to have somebody make a motion, they'd like to change it to something else.
Is there a motion to modify it? So, and is that to the four total with a three maximum?
Oh.
Okay, so four total dogs and cats with no more than three of either one?
Correct.
Okay.
And for what it's worth, just so everybody knows, of course, I don't believe there's going to be a tie, uh, but, uh, I don't vote, just, regardless of what I was saying, I don't vote.
I'm not sure there's going to be a second.
Unless there's a tie.
Does that need a second?
Yes.
Can I second it?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go, uh, total of four, no more than three of any one.
All right, do you want to, should I call it?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, roll call. Alderperson Philip?
Yes.
Alderperson Churchy?
Nay.
Alderperson Carroll?
Nay.
Alderperson Hegi?
Nay.
Alderperson Rosniak?
Nay.
Alderperson Garza?
Aye.
Alderperson Sikora?
Aye.
Alderperson Webb?
Aye.
Alderperson Kohler?
Aye.
Pass is five-four.
Okay. All right. Um, next issue is the differentiation of the vicious dog, dangerous dog. Uh, so I guess I'm looking for a motion to, is, is there a motion to scrap the dangerous dog and just keep the vicious dog language?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we've got the motion. Uh, we do have to have a second in order to move it. No, wait, wait, do you understand what I'm saying? I want clarity on it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Please.
Stay, now, what, what's the difference, or what are we asking?
So, so the, I'll go through it here.
What page are we on?
So, a vicious dog is, all right, so a vicious dog is, sorry, it's flipping this weirdly on me.
Can I just make a comment real quick?
Yes.
So, a vicious dog is similar to what we had before, which is, you have a certain type of dog, and all we've, the only change that's being made here is that you can't have a vicious dog, period, right?
Yes.
Because of insurance reasons.
Yes.
We've also introduced this whole concept of a dangerous dog, um, and if there's a disagreement between the owner and, um, a police officer about whether there's a dangerous dog, then technically, we would have a hearing in front of the council, and we could potentially have witnesses to determine whether the dog is dangerous or not. That seems like a process to determine whether the dog is dangerous or not, that seems like a process that we don't want to be involved in, and we should just leave it as a vicious dog provision, which is similar to what we had before. That's, that would be my proposal.
So, a vicious dog is a dog that has caused a serious injury or killed a person or domestic animal, caused an injury by biting a person in the face or neck, attacked a person in such a manner as to require defensive action to prevent bodily injury or property damage, when the person is conducting themselves peacefully and lawfully on property other than that of the owner of the attacking dog. Or a dog that attacked a person in such a manner, sorry, as, to result in property damage or injury to the person, did I read that same one twice?
No.
Conducted in, on property other than that of the owner of the attacking dog. Is that duplicated?
No, they're different.
Yeah.
C and D are different.
Okay. And then, and a dog, or a dog that attacked without provocation another animal, or another animal on property other than that of the owner of the attacking dog. So that's a vicious dog. Also, any dog owned, harbored, or trained primarily, or in part for the purpose of fighting, any dog declared to be vicious in another municipality, county, or state, or any dog that was previously found in violation of the paragraph prohibiting vicious dogs. Dangerous dog is one that's caused an injury that's less severe than a serious injury, chased, chased or attacked any human being without, or domestic animal without provocation, demonstrated an approach or apparent attitude of attack towards any human being or domestic animal in a menacing fashion without provocation, demonstrated a trait or characteristic or generally known reputation for dangerousness, I know that's one of the provisions that Alderperson Webb doesn't like, demonstrated a known propensity, tendency, or disposition to attack, cause injury, or otherwise threaten the safety of humans, and demonstrate, or other animals, demonstrated any other behavior which constitutes a threat of bodily harm to a person that's conducting themselves peacefully and lawfully, or run at large three or more times in at least in any 12-month period. So it's a different echelon, so.
So Justin, what do you want clarity on, I'm, I'm still not following.
I, I think we shouldn't put the dangerous dog portion in there at all, I think we should just leave it as vicious dog, that's what we had previously, and I don't see any reason to introduce this whole other category.
Got it.
And so the, the change then, previously we did allow vicious dogs with certain requirements, I'm, I would still recommend we just say no vicious dogs.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. So then the proposal on the table, motion by Alderperson Webb would be to remove the dangerous dog provisions, but leave the prohibition on vicious dogs.
Well, okay, do we have a second on that?
I, I just want to understand, you have a lot of provisions on what a dangerous dog is, are we classifying those elements that you just read through under the characterization of vicious dogs?
Vicious dog would stay the same.
It would?
That's the dog that causes seriously bodily harm, serious property damage.
I'm second on that then.
Okay, so we're seconding on a dangerous dog. Almost in favor of scrapping the dangerous dog provision and just sticking with vicious dog as we have now, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No. No more dangerous dogs in Hartford, all right, it's nice to know.
No, they're characterized under vicious dog, right?
Well, not all, not all dangerous dogs would be vicious dogs.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Now we have to count our chickens. Yes, so I would say.
That was big.
I, I would say, well. Five is a, is a half, is a quarter, bag or dozen of eggs. So is it four or six? The mayor has requested six, the, the original is four, so we're looking for recommended. Wants to make a motion.
In, in all of my discussions, the only city that, that came up with four was West Bend.
Okay.
And, and if any of you would like a list of the mayors or village presidents that said, yeah, tell them, that's six working, no complaints and everything, you're more than welcome to. Right now it's written as four, somebody would have to move to six, I'm still very interested in, oh, go ahead.
Question for Steve, that you might know this, what's the average lot size in West Bend compared to Hartford?
I think, I- I would say they're relatively the same. I, I would, I think West Bend might be marginally bigger, I think Hartford has a higher concentration in the older part of the city of those like .13-acre lots. Oh, I don't know about that. Yeah, I think that the older part of the city, you know, kind of south of Highway 60 is, has a lot, has small, more smaller lots than West Bend by, I don't have a specific. We don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, thank you very much, but there are a lot bigger than-
Yes, agreed.
West Bend lots, because I've driven through West Bend a number of times.
But those are in HOAs.
Yeah.
Not mine. Yes, Alderperson anti-chicken.
Thank you for that segue. I'm not going to make a motion, but I think zero is a good number.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd second that.
Really, that's just.
Okay, so, well, I guess we're sticking with four then. Well, there's no motion to go to six.
Okay, so looking for a motion to approve the chicken ordinance then?
Well, we don't need to do that motion, right?
No. No, well, I guess, I guess I would look for a motion to remove it then.
Oh, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
There you go. Be very consistent up here, thank you, thank you Ian for that.
We do have a motion and a second, and of course that would eliminate any, any real feedback after this goes to the press, because I know that there has been a concern about, well, I haven't heard anything from people, because I really don't think this has been high on the radar, but that's, I mean.
Excuse me.
Yes.
It made the West Bend News a big article, it made the Express News a big article, Hartford should know about chickens.
Big article?
Big article.
Front page, top full.
Front page today.
Front page today, yeah, right. And a couple of weeks ago, you had front page.
All right, so there's a mo, I believe there's a motion, can we vote on the motion, please?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
To remove the chicken ordinance altogether.
Okay, to, to remove the chicken ordinance altogether, rather than vote on it two weeks from now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
Nay.
No.
The noes have it.
And then the last one is to increase the total number of animals, I would say, across the board by, whoa.
Seven.
So, well, so I had seven, that was based on four chickens, three cats and dogs, so I would propose, and then the proposal was to move it to 10, are we also then increasing the?
I don't, I'm not wedded to 10, like, if we want to move it to eight, or leave it at seven, if we, if we voted down six chickens, then maybe we just leave it at seven.
Yes.
Well, you went from, your math was three and four.
So should, it should be four and four.
Now we went to four and four.
Yes.
So logically.
That'd be eight.
Twelve, no, I'm saying eight.
Okay, yep.
But my logic is four and zero, so that would-
Don't work that way, Jeff.
So, so I would, the proposal then would be to increase the total number of animals to eight, with the fanciers permit increasing to 10.
Alderperson Garza.
Yeah, you have, in the 26 dot 12, animal fancier, the different lot sizes.
Yes.
So would that change that three from nine to 10?
So, yes, the, yes, that is, that's, that was the other part of the proposal, was to change that from nine to 10.
I'll make a motion for, to change it to eight.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second to go from seven to eight, Alderperson Philip. Any further discussion?
I just want this over.
Okay, so.
But that also increases the fanciers.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do that one second, I'll do that one next, yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
Nay.
All right, and then I think the last one is, animal fanciers then, I would increase all of those by one.
Yep.
Based on the increase of animals.
Okay, anybody against that? I mean, I don't think-
We just do that by consensus?
Yep, we're good.
Sure. All right, so then, motion to approve as a first reading, chapter 26, based on those, incorporating those changes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, Alderperson, are you raising your hand?
Yeah.
Garza, second by Alderperson Philip. Any further discussion? Bring out all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
Nay.
There we go.
All right, it's eight-one. Moving on to the next one.
Thank you.
And again, I would ask this be a first reading because, correct, we haven't incorporated these yet.
This is repealing chapter 21, city attorney Ian Prusko.
Yep, so, again, very straightforward on this one, this is repealing chapter 21 of the municipal code, most of the provisions in there are moved to the animal fancier, or just null and void because it's the health officer, the remaining ones I will incorporate into a modification of the nuisance code and bring that next meeting.
Okay, we will hear that reading in two weeks.
Three weeks.
Three weeks, you are correct, on, what is it, the 13th of September, as I recall, last one, 11 odd three, ordinance number 1463, and ordinance creating section 7.115, maintenance of right-of-way, and this goes back to our city attorney, Ian Prusko.
So historically, the, all the residents of the city have maintained their right-of-way, the terrace along their right-of-way, the grass, mowed it, you know, taken care of it, that is tradition, it may have been statutory at one time, I have not been able to locate any statutory authority that requires this, we do have existing ordinances that address maintenance of sidewalk and other improvements within the right-of-way, this just makes it, by ordinance, the responsibility of a property owner to maintain the grass in their right-of-way, we also have provisions that help us prohibit the installation of six-foot-high natural prairie that would impede vision, or shrubs that would impede vision within the right-of-way. Right now it's a case-by-case approval provision, but we would likely just adopt general guidelines that says yesterday lilies are fine, but we don't want something over four feet, or three feet. To clarify that, this is just an effort to, I'm sure people have seen out-of-control plantings within the right-of-way, regardless of what would be approved, it would not allow for planter boxes, because that would be a granted privilege, that would be a installation within the right-of-way, which would be a prohibited regardless. Again, this is just a cleanup of what we always believed was an ordinance, but again, we're just making sure and clarifying that, and that's why we're bringing it forward tonight.
Okay, that's for the, any questions, comments, I think it's pretty straightforward, go ahead, President Hagy.
So just to make sure, we are talking about the area between the sidewalk and the curb?
Correct.
And that's spelled out in here adequately, it's beyond, beyond the curb-to-curb of the street.
Correct.
Beyond that is the right-of-way, because I've heard it called terrace, I've heard it called different things.
It's just maintenance, in this, it's just maintenance of right-of-way. So it's the grassy area in the right-of-way.
Can't see, oh, I didn't know what you were talking about.
Correct, correct, and there are, I mean, there are areas where the right-of-way, typically the right-of-way extends to the back of the sidewalk, there's some areas that the right-of-way may go halfway to your door.
This is something that's been longstanding, so I don't see any reason why this one we shouldn't act on tonight.
Correct, I would, I would request it be acted on tonight.
So I would therefore, if, if in order, I would act, or move to suspend rules.
Move to suspend the rules, second by Alderperson Carroll.
I, I had one.
Yep, okay, well, we'll suspend the rules, and then we'll get to your question. Okay, go ahead.
Motion by Alderperson Hagy, seconded by Alderperson Carroll, to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of proposed ordinance 1463.
Any further discussion on suspension? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Okay, with suspension, and would open for immediate consideration. Anybody?
Alderperson Webb.
Alderperson Carroll. Second by Alderperson Sikora, okay, we have a motion and a second, go ahead, Alderperson Webb.
I just had a quick question, it says in here you're supposed to maintain ditches?
Those aren't common, but there's a few locations in the city where there's, there are ditches.
Okay.
Bud Street, I think, might be an example.
The what?
Bud Street.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion by Alderperson Carroll, seconded by Alderperson Sikora for the adoption of proposed ordinance 1463.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No? Motion carried, thank you, okay, we don't have any second readings, next item is the city administrator's report, and that would be city administrator Steve Volker.
Okay, I believe the first item that I have tonight is your second quarter general fund results, again, we do this on a quarterly basis, obviously, and the second quarter for 2022 shows 42.72% of the general, of the general fund revenues.
Can you turn the picture on that, if anybody happens to be looking at it? Is there a way to rotate that?
Find where it rotates here.
I don't know if you can.
Okay, I just thought there might be a way, normally you, you can rotate it, you are correct, I, I didn't, oh, wait, there, there's this kind of a circle there, next to the garbage can there on the top? Is that, is, is that going to do anything for you, on the right-hand side, you're right there?
Nope, because it's a refresh.
Okay, yeah, you are correct, wow.
Mine, mine does.
Turn that TV on, it's on.
That's good. That was funny. Thank you, okay.
There we go, now it's, now we can read it.
We're in the black.
That's good. Passed.
There we go. All right, so, I can't read mine. Again, we were at 42.72% for revenues, you see that based on the last several years, last five years, again, that falls within that range of 36.84 up to 48.19, quite a bit behind 2021, but again, still within that range. As far as expenses go, we're at 48.9, again, slightly higher than in past years, not a big surprise considering the fact of inflation and how it's hit some of our costs, so overall, again, we're showing $587,000 behind last year, but again, as you heard earlier tonight, again, we had a great year last year, 500, but again, a, a total, a budget, a total number of 48.09 as far as expenses again goes. So, again, remember our revenues, majority of those will come into the fourth quarter in December when we collect taxes, so I'm not too concerned about revenues, expenses, yeah, I'm not, I will not be surprised if we go over expenses this year, simply because, again, just like all of you, all of our costs are going up, we have been continually talking to all the department heads regarding where they think they're at, and some are, are claiming to be, and, and seeing to be over budget, going to be, on projection to be over budget on certain items, especially like gasoline, so, again, besides that, as we enter into the third and fourth quarters, again, staff, specifically in the fourth quarter, will really review those numbers, line items by line items, and make sure that, again, they are, try and do the best they can to stay within their expenditure budget, so, any questions? Nope. All right. And the next item on the agenda has to do with an appeal of sex offender residency exception decision, again, as you remember, the city does, has enacted a sex offender residency ordinance, the, under that ordinance, if an individual does not fall within the fall within the parameters of where they are allowed by this ordinance to live, again, that distance is 1,000 feet from any location in which children are expected to be, parks, schools, things like that. They then can go before the committee, which is created by the mayor. The, the Sex Offender Residency Board met in July and turned down his, their, his request for exception to it, because it did not fall exactly within their parameters. Brian is here tonight to explain why he believes he should have, he's looking to appeal that decision and has to do so before the council. So I'll ask Brian to come forward at this time.
And I had a discussion with the city administrator. Normally, we allow three glorious minutes. He required, he, he asked for five. If you can keep it to five minutes to, to, to make your case, just state your name and address, and I'll start the time after that, so. Thank you. My name is Brian Schessler. My address is 303 North Main Street, right above the old Timey's Corners Bar. I appeared before the Sex Offender Board on July 14th, following a written request for the exemption, which I was denied due to the location, my residency. So coming before this council, I'm asking this board, or this council, to reverse that decision of the board and grant me the exemption to the residency restriction and to have a chicken. So. But in support of my request, I'd like to briefly just talk about some facts about myself. I'm a long-term resident of Hartford. I grew up here. I went to high school here, graduated in 1990. I returned to Hartford after I was discharged from parole, which was April 12th of this year. The only restriction I have with the Department of Corrections is lifetime registry through SORP. I'm currently full, employed full-time at Quad Graphics. In addition to that, I also take care of my mother, who's up in age. She doesn't drive, so I take care of shopping and whatever. One big concern that this council has that I was told is support system, which I have both professional and personal. My mother and a close friend of 30 years have been my support system since 19, since my incarceration since 1997. They've been a constant support through phone calls, letters, visits to all my institutions while, and while I was, been on parole. Since my release, I've gained three other friends that support me, one that has also been incarcerated with me, and that is a great support there, because we both have experience with the prison system, and those other three friendships and support continue to this day. I also have professional support, one being Otis Lockett, Lockett, who was my aftercare counselor in Milwaukee. I talked to him on a occasion. We had many groups and one-on-one sessions. His door and phone is always open for me to talk to him. I also have an active caseworker through SORP. Her name is Nicole Griffin, through the Wisconsin Department of Corrections, who I check in every few months, required by statute. During my incarceration, I received six months of sex offender treatment at Oshkosh Correctional, which I completed. In addition to that, I completed a cognitive thinking group that's called Thinking for Change, which addresses cognitive thinking, recognizing triggers to prevent reoffending, which I also completed, and also aftercare. Because of the treatment I had in prison, I know and I recognize my triggers. However, I'm 50 years old and the best deterrent I have is not to reoffend, to returning to prison and having to deal with all I went through for 25 years. I believe I am not a sexual threat to the community of Hartford. Therefore, I request that the com, the common council would strongly consider facts that I have given during your deliberations regarding the residency exemption to ordinance 2208. I thank this council, and I'll entertain any questions.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming forward.
At this time, you can now go into closed session to deliberate. We'll be returning into open session for a final decision.
Okay, we'll have the city clerk, Lori Hetzel, call the roll. Oh, go ahead.
Move to go into closed session.
Second is Alder Person Sikora.
Motion by Alder Person Hagy, seconded by Alder Person Sikora, to go into closed session at 8:34. The common council to move into closed session under State Statutes Number 19.85 Sub 1, Sub 1A, deliberating concerning a case which was the subject of any judicial or quasi-judicial trial or hearing before the government body relative to the request for exemption from sex offender residency restrictions. Common council to reconvene an open session for possible action. Hagy?
Aye.
Turchi?
Aye.
Garza?
Aye.
Phillip?
Aye.
Rosniak?
Aye.
Webb?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Sikora?
Aye.
Kohler?
Aye.
Motion carried, nine, zero.
Okay, before we go into closed session, did you have a point to make, Steve?
Yeah, because of the situation, Alder Person Kohler would not be able to participate in closed session.
Okay, understood. Okay, we're in closed session.